All right, good evening if we can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening everybody. First up on our agenda is exemplary people and we are going to be recognizing a few people with regard to our dugout project that we didn't do but they did.
Yeah, if Michael Morela and Mike Prozek could meet me right over here.
And Julie.
She wants to stay back.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's all right. So thanks both of you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
And this has been an incredible project in a lot of ways. This started out as Michael Morela's capstone project and I think, what was it, back in October?
Yeah, the real work started pretty much June.
June of last year.
But the main funding started in October, yeah.
Yeah, and so, Michael, if you recall, came out and did a presentation to the Board of Ed and this was all conceptual at that point. A lot of fundraising work went into this. Mr. Cobza, can you advance that by one slide, please? And these are some points that were shared at a Rotary presentation that Michael had done a couple of weeks ago. And at that point in time, the project had sixteen, a little over $16,000 raised. And where are we right now?
Right now, we are sitting about $20,000 and we are, the gap is $4,000 away from completing the project. And it's looking like that gap's going to close pretty fast as we're working with Home Depot and EverSource that are going to bring us some pretty big donations.
So the quote, "If you build it, they will come," really does apply in this project here. That's my brick, by the way. That's what I put on.
That's pretty good. That's a good, that's a good one.
And, you know, one of the things we talk about in education is that really our goal is to become irrelevant as adults. And that is to create students who ultimately are self-sufficient and self-directed and ultimately become leaders. And it really is tremendously gratifying to see that that very thing has happened with Michael. He's become a leader. He's brought this project to fruition. We were talking earlier a little bit about how this project probably wouldn't have happened as quickly as it had if it wasn't for having Michael's leadership as a student running it. How do you say no? And from permitting to fundraising to pulling contractors together, this thing's happened in less than a year's time and it's going to be open and ready to go for the opening season. So it's pretty amazing. Mike Prozek, unsung hero. He's sat in a lot of meetings, listening to us yap as we try to figure everything out. And when it comes time to getting things done in short order, last Saturday morning, a group of volunteers here, footings in the ground and work already going. And really, just amazing giving of his time in so many ways without any expectation of anything in return. So we're very, very lucky for everything that this team has given. Michael's been a tremendous captain on the baseball team and really a great leader with this whole project. So I want to thank you all very much for all that you've done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. You're more than welcome to stay for our meeting, but if you want to go, feel free. Everybody always takes me up on that. Maybe I need to stop saying that and just say, "Stay." Thank you so much. All right, I don't have anything for, as report, under my report. So we will move on to the consent agenda. Excuse me, I'm having trouble speaking this evening. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Jerry. Do I have a second? Thank you, Jessica. Any discussion on this? All right, hearing none. All in favor? Thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. And first up is our Massey board reps.
As February is Black History Month, we have a board set up in our foyer that celebrates where Massey students are from and certain cultural aspects from each of those areas. There also has been planning meetings that are being held every week to organize activities throughout the month. And every student on the morning announcements, well, every day a student talks on the morning announcements about a certain cultural or historical figure in history. Our Massey Boys Swim Team has been, has had a fantastic season this year. They have broken multiple Massey records and have been dominant in each of their meets thus far.
On March 10th at 9:00 AM, Massey High School will be hosting its annual Pi Day 5K. All proceeds will be going towards the Kathy Cool Memorial Scholarships for high school seniors that are planning to major in a math-related field. So if anybody's available, please come out and enjoy the run and the Pi-related festivities to follow. There will be a blood drive this Friday and it's open to students 17 years and older and all teachers during all periods. Last Saturday, Massey held the 17th Annual Massey Classic Competition for Color Guard. So the varsity team placed first in their routine titled Have Every Right. And it's a number that's focused on promoting female equality. Teams from all over Connecticut as well as New Jersey came to compete. And the ages ranged from middle school to college students. Last Saturday, organized by Kate Hadska, a Massey sophomore, there was a polar plunge where over 50 people were in attendance and plunged into the Long Island Sound to raise money for MS, specifically for Bruce Berg who's suffering with this condition. He has a daughter who is a sophomore here. And they raised almost $6,000 for the cause. And this Friday, Massey will be honoring two Students of the Month, Michelle Antony and Jacob Welch here in the library. So if you're around, come support Michelle.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, Michelle.
It was cold Saturday for that plunge, too.
Oof.
Yeah.
Thinking about them from the warm comforts of my home. Drinking my coffee. It was cold.
Yeah.
Good job, guys.
Anybody have any other reports this evening? All right, we will move on to public participation. All right.
There are a whole lot of public here.
Yeah. Yeah, for those at home, there's really no public here. We will move on to our report of our superintendent.
All right, first item, our student recognition. She was out sick today, so we're going to move that to our next board meeting. And then the next item there is an update on the 2019 budget. And just to keep you informed about the work that we're continuing to do in central office, we're continuing to look at ways that we can find some efficiencies over time. One of the big numbers that we're waiting on, though, is the insurance actual costs. And we're looking to have that in April. So rather than speculate about other changes, we want to have that in place to have good numbers for the board. Just to keep you in the loop, too, we've been meeting with the town as recently today is today just to talk about other ways we can collaborate and share some services. So those are all in the works. But by April, we should have some more solid numbers to see if there's any more movement we can create that will help the budget. And the next item I have is, I just wanted to keep everybody informed about decisions about changes to schedule due to weather. John did a beautiful letter last year about this and had it in the Courier, but we don't have a newspaper anymore. So I figured, you know, maybe use some of the agenda time just to refresh those memories of folks that have heard this before. And many people haven't heard this before. When we have any hint of weather at all, what happens is at 4:00 in the morning, first thing that occurs is I talk with the Department of Public Works and talk with our maintenance crews in district here, ask them what the roads look like, ask them what our school properties look like. If we have, if snow's already occurred, I ask them how long it's going to take to get cleared out and get a sense of what we're up against for the day. After that happens, there's a conference call with the area superintendents. And that's usually around 4:20 in the morning. Joe Cobza sits in and listens on that as well. Depending on what's going on with the weather, that can last anywhere from 10 minutes to 25 minutes. This past Wednesday's weather was very complex and that one went rather long. It was a good 25 minutes of conversation. Last Wednesday, we had ice in the morning and then there was the threat of the squalls in the afternoon. And the reports about the timing of the squalls really varied quite a bit, anywhere from 1:00 till 4:00. So that's what we were up against and that, we had a rather lengthy conversation about that. After we get off that conference call, we have another conference call. And then that one is with Joe Cobza, Gabby de Blazi, Dan Krosick, who leads our plow crew, and myself. That occurs at about 4:45 in the morning. And that's when we talk about the feedback from the superintendent's call and then start to put into plan or put into action our plan as a district. If it's a delay, how are the crews going to be deployed and what options do we have? Are we going to have to come back and have another conversation about a possible closure depending on the scenario? That's the nature of that conversation. And then by 5:10, 5:15, the program has to be set up because our timing is we get our calls out by 5:30 in the morning. That's when the computer starts calling everybody. So many of you might get a call by 5:37, 5:39, even 5:40. It generally takes the program to call, we have about 3,700 different phone calls that the program will make. It completes that within about 10 minutes. So we want to click the start button by 5:30 so everybody gets calls reasonably around the same time. So just to share that, there's a lot that goes on within that hour and a half. And just wanted to make people aware that it's not the kind of thing where all of a sudden the superintendent of schools wakes up and says, "Oh gee, you know, I think we need to delay." And then it just happens. There's a lot of conversations that go into that whole process and thought it might be worth sharing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And the one other thing I'll add is fundamentally, the call is always about student safety. Always, always, always. So that's an important detail to have out there. As an example, with last Wednesday, the squalls were forecast to come in the afternoon at dismissal. And the last thing we wanted was having these white-out conditions coming in while students are on the bus. I shared a scenario with Donna. About 12 years ago, a similar scenario happened in the state. And you might recall, it was in newscasts. Waterbury Public Schools had buses stuck on the road in these squalls. Students didn't get home until 9:00 at night. So that's definitely not the scenario we want to have. It's always about getting our students home safe from school every single day.
Yes, and contrary to everybody who texts my child, I do not make any calls with snow.
I might text you once in a while, but that's about it.
And I don't envy you that position.
Every weather.
But I think it's great information that it's not just, you know, there's a lot of work and effort that's put into, you get a lot of information from different sources before you make your call. And you're never going to make every parent happy. But I'm very happy that children's safety comes first. That's the bottom line.
Thank you. Fundamentally, that's what we want.
Right.
Yes.
You can't predict mother nature ever, let alone, you know, down to the science of exactly what time the squalls are going to start and do stuff. So I thought...
Safety.
You were bombing them and they were horrendous.
That's fun.
Better safe than sorry.
Right.
Absolutely.
That's right.
All right.
And then next is our Jockey Hollow Campus Study Committee starts their work this coming Wednesday at 7:00 PM right here. And this is to look at the two-campus format and determine whether or not there's a point in time we can look at consolidating into one. And our first night's meeting is going to be looking at, we're going to break into two groups. And we have, in the committee, we have teachers from both campuses, we have parents from both campuses, we have all the middle school administrators, we have central office administration, we have board of ed members. So really, it's every adult stakeholder related to both campuses. And so we'll break into groups and we're going to talk about what are the most important things related to both campuses. And we've got a T-chart set up where we're going to put that in two sides and we're going to put it up on the projector here and start from what's really important. What are the things that are most beneficial to our kids? And then work from those successes to find whatever solution will come from that work. So that starts this Wednesday at 7:00. And then regional special education program collaboration, just to keep all of you informed, we continue to work in this area. As mentioned before, during the budget process, special education is an area of increasing costs for all districts. And we've seen that with our budget. Our surrounding districts have had this issue as well. So four districts are going to be coming together in the next couple of weeks. It will be four superintendents. I'll be there. Christine Carver, the superintendent from Bethel. Lori Rodriguez, the superintendent from Newtown. And Tom McMoran, the superintendent from Eastern Reading, Region 9. We're all going to get together and we're going to talk about ways that we could look to combine programming to deliver services. The potential benefit from that is if we're in the ones, if we're the ones in control of the programming, we're also the ones in control of the budget. And we're not beholden to outside agencies to set rates and then escalate them in these large increases that we've seen. So that's what we're hoping to achieve over time. It's a big task. It involves a lot of pieces, but if we don't pursue it, it'll never happen. So I'll keep you posted on that work.
Great.
And let's see, lastly, Mr. Cobza is going to be heading our calendar committee for 2020-21. If you recall, last year, around this time, I came to the board with the calendar for 2019-20. And so we always do this about two years in advance. So what we're doing right now is putting together a committee, including a range of stakeholders, so we get good feedback from the get-go. And one of the things we've been talking about is let's have some board members on that committee. So if you're willing and interested to be a part of that work with Joe, he's going to be heading that up over the coming weeks so that we can bring a proposal back to the board for a calendar for 2020-21. So is anybody interested in serving on that committee? Jerry? Might be nice to have two. Did I see a hand going up?
No. Oh.
And Alan? All right, so Jerry and Alan. And Joe will get notification out to you on that. And that's everything I have.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Well, we're going to move on to presentations. And you're first up.
I am. So this is another update, just to keep you informed about enrollment. And in your board of ed packet, you'll see these handouts, which we had during the budget process. And this was 2015-16. This takes a look at all the students who newly enroll from October 1 through to the end of the year. And the minuses are the students who withdraw during the course of the year. There's a tally on the bottom for every single one of the grade levels. And then there's the net effect for grade, the net effect in terms of total number of students in or out. So for 2015-16, October 1 through to the end of the year, we had an increase of nine students over the course of the year. And then same thing, 2016-17, same format, a net increase of 26 students during the course of the year. 2017-18, this is not a typo. We have the same number increase for that year, 26 students. And then where we are right now is about six students. And the reason why I say about six is we just had six students graduate mid-year. They're not in that number. So we generally keep those students in because they tend to use our services for the remainder of the year. But for full disclosure, we're, you know, between zero to six, depending on how you look at it. So we're flat right now. Now, there's still a good amount of time. This was done on January 31st. There's a good amount of time between now and the end of the year. But given the way that these trends have changed over time, I thought it would be good to keep you informed on a more frequent basis as to where we are. So this kind of information we'll get again in another couple of months. And the end of the year, we'll have another update, too, so you're informed about these changes over time.
Great.
All right. Next present, yes, sir?
Can you jump back to the last slide?
Yep.
Can you, is it possible, I know I'm in a real pain here, to add a kindergarten column into three elementaries for next time? So we could see the enrollment kindergarten-wise in all three elementaries?
Incoming for next year.
Yeah.
We can. Just so you know, that number swings all over the place till we get to August. But yeah, we can. Because, and by the way, the new digital registration site, as soon as that went out, we had 13 registrations within literally hours of it going up.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so that's working out well. But yeah, we can definitely give you an update on that on an ongoing basis as to where we are with registrants. And we could do that by school, too, so you can see. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, any other questions on that? All right, next up, we have Dr. Greenwood and Mrs. Strong regarding high school graduation requirements.
I'll apologize up front. I have a cold, so you'll probably hear me coughing in the back. But if I go down, Julie's ready to go.
Okay.
So we're going to talk a little bit about the graduation requirements at Massey for the class of 2023. So that's our incoming freshman. So you can see that in 2017, that the state changed the graduation requirements. So you can see for the class of 2023, that it'll be a minimum of 25 credits for incoming freshmen. The current state statute for 2004 to 2022 was at 20 credits. But at Massey, we already were rolling out a slow plan to get towards the 25 because we saw it coming. And so in 2017, you all worked with Joe to change it to 22.5. But we do need to look at making that change to 25 credits now, since our freshmen are coming in for 2023. So just some side-by-side comparisons. If you go to the far left, that's the current 20 credit requirements. The middle column represents where we are at Massey. You can see we're 2.5 credits over the minimum requirements. And you can see that the biggest changes for us come in the mathematics, where the state is saying at least three courses and we're saying four are credits. And you move down, you can see health, we have 0.25 credits and the state doesn't have any requirement for that. And our senior capstone is a half a credit. So if you focus your eyes to the third column, that's where you'll see the real changes to the 25 credits. You can see that they've combined English and social studies and you're just calling it humanities. And that's nine total credits. But you can see the inclusion of the arts in there also. So if you look, focus your eyes down a little bit, you can see that they're, they used to have one separate credit for arts and vocational education and now they've moved that up into humanities. So it's nine total. And similarly with math and science, the nine total. Phys ed stays at one. I already addressed the art. The health goes from, they had no requirement, we had 0.25. That's going to go to a full credit. So that'll be, that'll be a change for us. And then they have something called a mastery-based diploma assessment. But I'll talk about that in one moment. But the capstone should fit pretty nicely into that category already. So we've already laid some groundwork for that. But you can see another change for us will be below that is the world languages, where we're going to require a full credit of world language. Oh, wow.
So can I ask a question?
Can I get in trouble with Tom Brady?
Yeah. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So just so I'm reading this right, that first block with English and social studies, currently that's seven credits that we require?
Yes.
Or going into nine?
Yeah, but it includes art. And if you go, we're already including one for art normally.
Okay, so that one moves up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Correct.
And then the next block, math and science?
Yep.
You got six total?
Yep.
And you're going to nine. So you're adding, so you're adding another three there.
Mm-hmm. And it includes probably some of the, no, we haven't talked about exactly what courses we'll go into each. And that's on the next slide a little bit. But that'll include probably some of vocational education courses, too, and other electives.
Okay. But can world languages be placed there or no?
No, it'll be its own separate category. At a minimum of one. And we'll, I'll look at that with you in one sec, too. So for tonight, the biggest thing we really wanted to talk about tonight is the first bullet point, which is that for the 1920 program studies, which we need to put out in the next week, for the class of 2023, we'd like to ask that you take a look at Board Policy 6146, because that's, currently says that students will take 22.5 credits. And we'd like to make the change to 25 credits, which of course is a state requirement. So we need to make that change at some point. And so if you keep following through, we also, currently right now, we're investigating to determine the best way to fulfill those 25 credits. So we need to look at the specific courses that we teach in each department and look at the program studies and see how we're going to split up those 25 credits. Because if you go back here and you add up 991111, you don't get 25, obviously. So there's room for us to put courses in above the courses that are required. So we want to talk about what that looks like at Massey.
And the way the policy is written, it does specify what areas they need to take, what areas the credits are coming from.
The way the statute's written, it's like...
And the way our policy's written, yes.
In our policy's written right now, it looks just like that middle column.
Yes.
But the statute is horrible. Because you're going to force kids into taking a class that they have no interest in taking to fulfill a requirement in a specific area. So you may have a child who can't take four years of band because they have, they're going to be forced to take some sort of engineering or technology class.
That's why we understand what the, we need to understand what the groupings are going to be, right?
Right.
What can fall into each, so what falls into arts, for example?
Exactly. We need to do that work to share.
Yeah.
Yep. The third bullet point is to best gain determined, the best daily schedule to meet the 25. And so that's a board goal, to take a look at the Massey schedule. And we've already started that work with the, with the administrators at the building, with the teachers, excuse me. And so we're going to start looking at some different scheduling options. And one of them, I think, one of the things that we'll, we'll talk about here brings it to the bullet point below, is to go back, and we don't have to do it today, but to look at 6146 again, because in there, it says that students must take five classes to be full-time. And I think that we probably want to look at moving to six classes to be full-time, if you consider full-time. So that allows you to, physically you'll take more classes. And that might address some of what you're talking about, Donna. If kids are taking more classes, even though they'll meet the requirements, but also be able to get in those electives, too. So we've got to look at our schedule essentially to get this done. And so we've, we've talked a lot about this administratively already. And so this, this slide just represents all the things we've already talked about as we, before we came to sit down and have this conversation with you. So you probably have other questions, but these are questions we're already sort of rattling around ourselves. Starting with the world language piece, determine the best way to meet the requirements for students who currently don't graduate with a world language. So you could see that before, there was no requirement and we didn't have a requirement. So I think the natural question is, well, how many kids are not taking a world language? So just so you know, our current senior class, there's only 16 students of the 253 who aren't going to graduate with a world language. So we're really talking about how are we going to be programming for 16 students?
Yeah.
Just to put your mind at ease there. The second comes in health, to talk about the best way to look at our options for putting health in. So is it a full course? Is it 0.25 over four years? Is it a half-year freshman year and a half-year senior year? What do kids best need to meet that? And to look at what the state wants us to incorporate into that health course also. And so we've done some of that work. The third is this idea of a STEM, instead of having discrete math and science, but looking at this nine credits in STEM, where currently we're four math and two science, and going to nine STEM. And so talking about what, what does nine STEM look like and how do we move our, some of our current electives into that nine STEM, which moves to the bullet below it with biology. And I know Mr. Stolz has already been here and spoken to you about the NGSS standards and his desire to move to all incoming ninth graders taking biology to help work with the new NGS standards. And so we'll be working with that, with him, and talking about those nine STEM credits altogether.
And just to clarify on that, the texts that you'll be voting on later on are part of the transition towards this. And so the bio would be 2020. Next year, those texts coming in, program classes next year are the same science classes that they've had for freshman year?
Correct. So we'll be looking at the year after that, hopefully, with, hopefully looking at a new schedule and moving all those students to biology to meet those, the new standards.
Would there be no advanced class for freshmen in biology?
We didn't talk that far yet.
No, but you're trying to mandate biology freshman year.
That's right.
Yeah, okay, all right.
The next is looking at capstone. So we want to talk about how capstone, the capstone experience can be used as part of this mastery-based diploma assessment. But also, we've looking at some, some of the other different types of assessment the state is saying that we're going to be able to use. And some of the other pieces of data they say we can look at would be SAT performance, AP performance. So we feel pretty strong that with our current capstone program, plus our kids' performance on SATs and APs, we're going to meet that mastery-based diploma assessment category, that credit. But we just have, again, determine what that looks like at Massey. Bullet below that just talks about the class of 2018, if you just want to look backwards for a moment, of the 293 graduates, they averaged 26.3 credits. So we're talking about moving to 25. It's just, again, for your information, kids are averaging more than 25 currently. It's not, we don't know. We have to look. Is it the right 25 in terms of the new, the new requirements? But just so you know, kids are already graduating with that many credits. So it's talking about, make, you know, kind of moving them in directions we need them to move to meet the requirements. So that means 37 graduated with fewer than 25 credits. And the truth is, going back to the policy I talked about, moving from five classes to six, the vast majority of those 37 that graduated with less than 25, their junior and senior year, they were only taking five courses. Had they taken six courses, they would have met that 25. So it probably is wise for us just to make the move to the six courses per year to be sure that we don't end up with a pinch with some kids. And yeah, we don't have to do that tonight, but that's, I just want to put that out there. It would certainly help with that number. And of course, I'm probably on your mind a little bit about FTEs. And so, so we need to evaluate what our staffing needs would be respective to the new schedule and the composition of the courses. But, and Julie could speak to this if, if you have some specific questions. But we've looked at, with the biology first, with the world language, with the health, with our current staff and with our class sizes. And we can't really foresee a scenario where we might need any more than a 1.0 FTE to get it done with the sizes of our classes that we're... with the sizes of our classes that we have. So I don't think it's going to be a great impact to us FTE-wise. It's more of a behind-the-scenes work we need to do with the schedule and really kind of give a pincer with what the state is asking us to do with the categories. Questions?
Hey Jake?
Yeah?
Currently, how many seniors leave the high school to go to work? You're telling me move five classes to six? So as the heckhead man that I am, I'm just currently, at the top of your head, how many seniors leave our campus to go work at 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock? How many have met the requirements and work?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I talk about that? So the number of students with early dismissal is not really the number of students who are leaving after completing their classes to go to work.
Agreed.
So we do have students that are finishing their coursework each day and have an early dismissal and leave campus and are back on campus at 2 o'clock for a sports practice.
For a sports.
So.
True.
I don't have the numbers on the percentage of going to employment versus a dunk and run in terms of, you know, what the destination is on, on leaving campus.
I mean, that's exactly what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's always a mix. When we, when we talk about our schedule, we talk about early dismissal, we talk about, you know, kids being available to work.
But the sixth, the sixth period, not that I'm against it, because I'm not.
Yeah.
That will cut out that option, I assume.
It will increase the amount of time that students are in school, which we're finding to be a good thing.
Oh, of course. Agreed.
Yeah. But I did want to talk about the worry about the STEM credits. As a fine arts person, I want to make sure we have time for students to pursue courses of choice as well.
I was going to jump on that.
But in terms of how this would impact most kids, there's a large number of kids in school that are taking four years of math, four years of science, and also have interest in electives. If you take four years of math and four years of science at MACIC, that's nine and 1/2 credits of STEM right there, because a typical kid is going to take biochem and physics. So if you just do four years of math, four years of, you know, what, following the sequence, you're already meeting the STEM. So we don't anticipate anyone would have to not pursue a course of interest. It's actually kind of a happiness that for kids that have trouble accessing in one way or another, we can maybe discern a little more flexibility and get more kids to reach that standard.
And just to understand, Julie's going for that, biochem, physics, or lab courses? So they get 1 and 1/2 credits for them when they take them, so.
And those are requirements, those three are requirements?
Well, they're not necessarily requirements. Remember, as of right now, there's only, you need two science, one of them has to be biology. The large majority of our kids will probably take, usually they take grade nine science or biology first year, chemistry, physics. But if it moves to this, biochem and physics will be four and 1/2, yeah, four and 1/2 credits right there. And if you took four years of math, you're at eight and 1/2 right there in the STEM section.
Got it. That's great.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Still somewhere, did you get to use this?
She wanted to use the phone.
Yeah, I forgot it was holding.
And I know we've talked about this before. We've had these requirements come from the state previously. We've asked JP and other legislators, is this going to stay? The feedback we've gotten is this time it's staying. Yeah, so it's really, it is something we need to prepare for, and I appreciate what Jake and Julie have done, and Joe, in putting this together so we can be thoughtful about how best to implement.
Yeah, this was a big discussion at our legislative breakfast back in December. And everybody's, all the legislators that were there, their comment was that they have no intention of putting this off any longer, and they're just looking to let it go into effect. So it's, it pretty much is a done deal, there is going to, this is going to happen. We will move on to old business, and first up is the new course proposal, which is the Advanced Science course that Jim Stolzel had went over with us last time. So do I have a motion to approve curriculum new course proposal, which is Advanced Science as presented? Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion on this new course, and part of this is to meet these requirements? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. Our second item is going to be the curriculum instructional material, The Living Earth, which was the book that we saw, the workbook last time. And that is going to be in, that book, so it's not confusing, because I was confused after last meeting. That book is going into effect in this coming school year. The dropping of the grade nine science that Jim was talking about last time is not for this coming school year. It is for the following school year, which is 2020's school year. So the kids will still take grade nine science next year, then the following year, that will go away, and it'll just be Biology I or Biology I honors. So do I have a motion to approve the curriculum instructional material, The Living Earth proposal, and the Living Earth Evaluation Forum as presented? Thank you, Jerry, do I have a second? Thank you. Jeff, we'll go. Any discussion on this? All right, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. New business, we have none, does anybody have anything before we move on to adjournment? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Shannon, second, Jerry. All in favor? Great, thank you, we're adjourned.
Thank you.